Okay, ready, begin.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic.
With this statement.
One nation under God.
Under his oath, liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Okay, that leads us into the moment of silence. And we would ask that you please keep to follow individuals who have passed away in your thoughts and your prayers. Arthur Votay, father-in-law of Lee Votay, TMS guidance counselor. Philip Cohen, former Rogers High School teacher and coach. We'll have a moment of silence for those. Thank you. Um, Mrs. Nash, do we have anybody signed up for public comment this evening?
We do not have anyone signed up for tonight.
Alrighty. Um, so I'll remind everybody if you can, as we're going through. Uh, remember if we can try not to talk over one another, try to mute ourselves when possible. Uh, to help with hearing everybody and the background noise. So with that said, we'll move in to the action items. Uh, first action item is 3.1. And that is a request for approval of an interagency agreement between Newport Public Schools and Child and Family Services. Uh, the superintendent recommends approval of the agreement between the Newport Public Schools and Child and Family Services for our college and career readiness coordinator. Uh, the funding is included in the Newport Public Schools' local budget. Do we have a motion to approve as presented? Louisa?
So move second.
Second by Becky. Uh, and are there any questions or, uh, any questions of the superintendent or anything that anybody needs clarification on for 3.1? Um, okay. I'm not seeing any or hearing anybody. Uh, Stephanie, go ahead.
Sorry, Ray, I slowed on mute. Um, I can't remember, was this previously funded by Newport Public Schools and Child and Family is taking over or, um, or has anything changed in that regard, I guess is really my question, or was it always our position?
It was never our position. It has always been a partnership and the contract has come from an outside agency.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions or comments? Uh, seeing none, I would ask Mrs. Nash to do a roll call vote, please, on 3.1 for approval of the interagency agreement.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, seven zero.
Mr. Chair, you're on mute.
Here we go. Sorry about that. Uh, next item is 3.2, request for approval of the revised 2020-2021 school calendar. A revised school calendar for 2021-2020-2021 is presented for approval. Revisions were made to align with the state calendar issued by RIDE and also incorporate district professional development dates. Uh, is there a motion to approve the calendar as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, there a second? Uh, Ms. Winslow? Uh, there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions or anything that the superintendent needs to explain in regards to the calendar to anybody?
This is carved in stone now?
As, as, as carved in stone as stone can be right at the moment, so. It's a soft stone.
A soft stone, yeah, this.
Yes. Um, okay. Any other questions? Hearing or seeing none, uh, Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote on the approval of the school calendar as presented this evening.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you, that's seven zero.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is 3.3. It's a boiler control systems contract. Uh, this project was brought before the Newport City Council on August 26th for approval. Documents presented to the city council as well as city council resolution 2020-79 approving the project are provided. Connecticut temperature controls was the sole bid for the project. The total project cost $237,486 inclusive of $215,986 for boiler control upgrades and $21,500 for project contingencies. And will be called as capital improvement funds, uh, from the city, I believe. Um, so is there a motion to approve the boiler control contract as presented this evening?
Yep, uh, motion?
Yeah, Ms. Boatright, seconded by Ms. Bowlin. Uh, any questions or, uh, information anybody would like from even Mr. Young, uh, about the project?
I have one.
Okay, Mrs. Bowlin.
So, you know, Pell being relatively new, was this something that has failed at Pell or something, this something that is new to the market and we're installing now? I'd just like to, you know, know about Pell.
It believes Mr. Young is, there he is, okay.
Yes, I'm here. Um, nothing's failing at Pell, it's working fine, but just have to keep it, um, up to date and upgraded.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Jermaine.
Yeah, Mr. Young, isn't there something that the controls and the software are almost outdated at this point in time?
Yes, there's some, some software issues that need to be updated and that's where this is covering that. She's gonna keep us moving forward.
I believe also we wanted to make sure it was not linked or tied into our, um, IT infrastructure so that the HVAC and everything else is off that line? Am I going in the right direction with that statement?
Yes, yep, they'll be separated and just, yeah. See just some, some needed upgrades. Um, it started, this process started a while ago and Tom Harrop has been a key, key player in getting this, this up and running.
This also helps to fulfill our requirements as, uh, Mr. Goncalves knows better than I do about how much we have to put forward towards repair, maintenance and upgrades to our facilities.
Mr. Chair?
And Mrs. Neary?
Uh, Mr. Young, I do have a question, still, uh, still on Pell. The, I understand that these are needed and I understand that they're moving us forward. My question for Pell is, will those updates, will they be compatible with the extension that we're building on to Pell?
Yeah, I, I would have to, I'll have to get back to you then, Miss Neary. I, I would think that Tom Harrop would make sure that they are compatible with the, with the expansion, but, um.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a quick, a quick note on that, an email verification.
I don't think you would do a $200,000 project if it wasn't, uh, compatible with, with.
Except it's not, it's 55 at Pell, so it's not 200,000 and it could fall through the cracks. I'd just like to check before.
I'll follow up with you as soon as I can.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Winslow, go ahead.
Um, so I, I just kinda wanna hear from the rest of the committee on what our gut feeling is for doing this at Rogers and NAC Tech, if it's, should we, is it worth going forward with this or do we want to wait if a bond passes for a new school? Uh, you know, how much does this improve the situation for the next few years while we wait for a building to be constructed? Is it truly worth putting the money into the boiler or is there different maintenance that we should look at? Um, I think, I mean, I trust Mr. Harrop on this and I know it's been a, a long time coming, but I don't know if anybody has that feeling of uncertainty like I do right now because we're so close to that November vote.
So, so I'm going to ask Mr. Young, I'm not sure if Tom Harrop is with us as well tonight, but I believe the work at Rogers uh, has to do with being able to better control the heat with the issue that, that we've had in Rogers, if I recall from when this was up before and discussed. Uh, I, they can verify, but I believe it had to do with better controlling the heat at Rogers. And remember, you know, when the bond's successful, we're still gonna need, you know, at least two or three more winters of
Right.
Rogers High School. So I don't know if Mr. Young or Mr. Harrop can speak to that, but I believe that's what the work at.
Yeah, we, we do need this, um, now, I mean, not now, but like yesterday, so. At Rogers.
It's just about prioritizing, so that's kind of all I wanna hear. I mean, if, if, I know we need to keep the building in as good shape as possible. And so I just wanna make sure that, you know, if we're gonna spend the money to do something and then end up with a new facility in a few years, this is still where we wanna spend the money.
Dr. Flowers?
Having watched the, um, condition of buildings for so many years, th- this is the wisest move because even, as we say, we're not gonna say even if, but when the bond passes and you have to get through all the planning, the building, everything else, we owe it to the people who are going to be in the, the old New Rogers High School. The old, the, the present high school to be as safe and reasonably comfortable as possible. And it's just like getting work for the other buildings. I, I don't want the sitting committee and anyone else who's going to be here to be, uh, going back to those days of, well, let's just put it off, put it off, put it off. And, you know, it, it, this to me is the, it's a good fight. Granted, it's a lot, but it will only get worse, that's all. So sometimes you have to, just have to spend it and, uh, uh, again, making sure things are safe for the, um, the teachers, staff and the kids who are gonna be there.
Uh, any, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Leary?
So, two questions. One, um, when Mr. Gonzalez comes up, I want him to show us our line item that we have for capital improvements. How much money's in it and each thing we do is deducted from that. So this is not being deducted from that, am I correct?
I'm gonna let Mr. Gonzalez, uh, answer that question for you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, as indicated on the backup, this, um, this particular line item is coming out of company 13, which is the capital improvement account, not our company 10.
So could you, um?
I believe, just a minute, Mr. Leary, I think, Mr. Gonzalez, I, I think the point on that is that that is from the city's funds, that they fund our capital improvements over a certain amount, not school department funds appropriated to us by the city for maintenance.
That's absolutely correct, sir.
So, could you explain that to the public if there's any public listening that I can't tell from myself, or? You know, which, which, what money, what the city does, how much money we have in that account and what have we used it for?
Go ahead, Mr. Gonzalez, is that?
Apologize, my delight, I have, um, a lot of background noise here. I'm not prepared to, um, explain a company, uh, Fund 10 tonight. I wasn't, um, I, I just wasn't made aware ahead of time. I don't have queries of exactly, uh, what resides in that, however. Um, or anything residing in the school capital repair account is in, um, the budget that this, uh, city approved.
By, so when we get the budget to get, get that together, if not, get me an email on that. I wanna know how much is in it and each thing we do can deduct and show what's where we're at going forward. I don't expect any answer now, but I do going forward.
Very good.
So, second, one more question.
Go ahead, Ms. Leary, yeah, I was just gonna say your second question, go ahead.
My second question is that, why, you know, I, I, I'm, you know, everybody knows, I introduced in 2008, we put 1% of our budget. If anybody votes to keep up their schools, it's me all the time. I put it in there and it was taken out in 2015. My concern is what Stephanie just said. Why don't we wait six weeks on Rogers? Six weeks from now's election. Why can't we wait six weeks on Rogers and see what happens? I mean, if it's whether Rogers amount of money is, it may not be well spent. And I hate to see taxpayers' money wasted if the bond passes. It fails, then go forward with it, 100%. So, I mean, is there a way that somebody, Mr. Young, somebody can answer that, say, let's wait six weeks? At that point, my answer is gonna, I'm gonna vote no, if you're putting this all together and you can't wait six weeks on Rogers. Do Thompson, do Pell, and let's see what happens from that. If it's all together and you're not gonna wait six weeks, my answer is no. I vote no.
Alrighty.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Dr. Jermaine?
I just wanna share with everyone in the public that when the bond passes, we will not be moving into the new s- high school and, um, Ms. Boatright and Ms. Bowlin can correct me. If all goes well with the construction, it will be a good three years or more. Or three years. Do I have it three years?
Yes, yes.
So we have heating problems, as you all know, at Rogers. And we literally have parents call us during the winter about this, saying my child's room is 30 degrees or 32 degrees. So I just wanna share that with, um, with all of you and the public and, um, Mr. Leary, just, you know, I know you know this, but I just wanted to share that. And the entire cost, you know, Thompson is $66,000, Pell is $52,000. And then the rest does go to Rogers, but the whole 200 is not solely for Rogers, just for the public's information. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Leary.
So why, why can't they do Thompson and Pell first? You're talking six weeks, is this project gonna be done, the whole thing in six weeks? Mr. Young's against that. If it's not, let's wait in Rogers. I mean, I'll, you know.
Well, Thompson is done. Okay, so what, just a minute, Mr. Young, I, um, I don't know if you have the answer to that question from Mr. Leary or not, but.
Mr. Leary, I'd have to get your timeline to be specific.
Alrighty, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, when we take the vote, I'll be voting against this, not, not against the proven, not against what's happening, okay? It's just that I think you should wait six weeks. It's six weeks, but now you know what's happening. And it, it may wanna make a different cost for $130,000, $140,000 dollars going into Rogers. So I wanna be clear when I make my votes, it's no. So I always support keeping builders up and had a fight to get this on the bond. I had a fight to get the committee, I mean, to get the vote for this, to put 1% of our budget away 10 years ago, 12 years ago. So it never happened, but I don't wanna waste taxpayers' money.
Understood, thank you. I'm gonna, I see all, I think Ms. Boatright had her hand up after Mr. Leary. I'll get everybody, uh, Ms. Boatright.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I think it's very important to know that students go through Rogers just once and they, those that are in the school building over the next three to four years need to be kept warm. Um, that is part of our responsibility to keep them warm and safe and dry, so I don't think that we have a choice here. It's one of the things that we need to pass this bond so that we don't have many, many more situations like this. This is exactly why we need the bond to be passed now. But we can't just continue to defer and defer maintenance on things because it will only get worse. It's like you still have to repair leaks in the ceiling, you still have to take care of mold issues. We still have to maintain the building until the students have moved out. And it's sad, it's sad that, um, but it is what you have to do in your own home. You have to keep the heat on in your own home, so I think we, it's, it's, um, it's very important that we pass the bond so that we don't keep having to throw good money after bad. But, um, but I think that this is something that has to be done, so. And I did wanna add one last thing because Mr. Leary just asked about this and we had talked about adding a, um, a monthly report on the facilities to the school committee. And on that, I think it can just identify by building some of the expenses that have been paid by both buckets, both are Fu- um, Fund 10 as well as city money, so we can track, you know, some of the dollars that have been spent in those, uh, in that report.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Dr. Flowers was next.
I pretty much, um, what Mrs. Boatright said is what I was going to say, but I think to say, why wait? Why waste money to keep people safe and reasonably warm? Uh, and not have to go without heat altogether? Obviously, this work has not been planned if everything was okay. If it was, if everything was working as it should. I don't think the, uh, the people in that department are going to go running around, uh, looking to spend all of this particular, this money. Again, we save three years, you have a good-sized group of people, including faculty and staff who are, uh, going to have to deal with all kinds of weather. So I think it's, just to call it a waste to me is not quite the right, um, attitude. Thank you.
Mrs. Neary was next.
Um, I, I just wanted to say that, um, we need to decouple this conversation from the school bond. Um, whether or not the school bond passes or when it passes, um, regardless, students are currently cold. It doesn't matter whether or, whether or not the school bond passes, passes. Uh, students are currently cold, so are faculty, so are staff. And therefore, we need to make sure that that works. It is, it does need to be decoupled, this conversation from the school bond. They're not, they're really ultimately not related to each other. Thank you.
And Mrs. Bowlin?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna say, you know, just to make everybody aware that the city council has already voted to expend this money, this is just now us doing it. Um, and also, I just, I wanted to ask, are we gonna be able to have the heat on in the building during the winter this year? Due to COVID? No, I don't, I don't know if it's gonna be allowed.
I, I certainly hope so, it's gonna be quite cold otherwise.
You can't turn it on in a bus. The windows all have to be open in the bus.
Yeah, well, at least they have their clothes on.
That, that's one of those issues we'll deal with as, as a cold comes.
Put that out there, just to complicate things, just a little.
Yep.
Yes, um, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? I believe I see none, so seeing none, I would ask, uh, Mrs. Nash to conduct a roll call vote uh, to approve the boiler control system contract as presented this evening.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Me.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
I have six one, thank you.
Uh, continuing along, next item is 3.4, request for approval of the SMILE program memorandum of agreement. It's a participation agreement between Newport Public Schools and the University of Rhode Island. SMILE program, uh, for our consideration is, if approved, the SMILE program will run at TMS and Rogers High School and will be funded through local budget and restricted grants. Uh, is there a motion to approve, uh, the agreement as presented this evening? Uh, Dr. Flowers, uh, seconded by Ms. Winslow. And, uh, I'm gonna have, I'm sure Dr. Bean is with us and can give us a, uh, a brief overview of what entails with the agreement. And, uh, the, at the end of that, if you could just address the funding, uh, for clarity, that would be great. Dr. Bean?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Gomes. Uh, this year, we're able to offer the program five through eight. Uh, so we have three teachers who will be running the program. The fifth grade program would be a separate program, then the six to eight, and then the nine to 12. So we have a total of three teachers that are running the program, but one of the Thompson teachers is going to also take on the fifth grade. The, the program is set up as a four-five program. We, um, were not able to get, um, a teacher at Pell to do the fourth grade. But we were able to work with URI so that we were able to do, um, the fifth grade program at Thompson. The, the program is funded out of, uh, local budget along with, uh, restricted budget, restricted grants. So URI supports the training, the materials, uh, the transportation to the different events. And what Newport is funding is the stipend for the teachers. But all the other, um, materials and professional development uh, and meetups for the children are all funded through a grant through the University of Rhode Island.
Thank you, I'm sure there'll be some questions for you. I see, uh, Mrs. Neary?
Um, yes, um, thank you, Dr. Bean, maybe an explanation of what the SMILES program is? Would, um, that would be nice, but I'm concerned about a couple of things, not that, um, how is this being, um, delivered in 2020 with COVID? Um, how is, who is, um, managing the safety of the transportation this year? And will all students who choose to participate in SMILES, are they picked from the general Thompson population? Or just this, or just the students who are physically in, in, present in the building? So those are really my three questions. They're all kinda COVID-related. How is this, how is this being done this year? And also, what is it?
Right, so the SMILES program is an interactive science, math, technology and engineering program uh, that we've been involved in for a number of years with the University of Rhode Island. Uh, we have, um, the, right now, the, uh, the university is looking at a variety of different models on how to, uh, provide this program, you know, typically, uh, you know, it's an after-school program. And then there's evening events, um, for the students to, um, showcase their projects. So a lot, a lot of this is a work in progress. So obviously, um, the, uh, some of the program will have to be virtual. So it would be open up to all children, uh, so that, um, you know, anyone that wants to be involved in it would be able to be involved in it. Um, in terms of the transportation, uh, there, um, you know, that's also still a work in progress. I know that they would still have to adhere to the safety regulations that we are currently under, um, with transportation as well. So, you know, there's, um, I, you know, I know that, uh, our contact over at URI, you know, is, um, very excited about the program. She already had the training with, um, the teachers that were interested in being part of the program. Uh, so, you know, we're, just like everything else, we're gonna do our best to make it work for all kids so that no one's excluded that wants to be part of it.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Uh, there any other questions for Dr. Bean? Uh, Dr. Flowers? Sandrine, have to unmute. You're muted.
I try, huh? Uh, in that, um, Dr. Bean, about approximately how many youngsters have been in the, you know, say in a particular group?
I mean, in the, in the past, we've had, uh, anywhere from, you know, seven to over 20 kids in the group. I mean, it's varied each year, but, uh, the typically it's a fi- four, five group, which has always presented an issue because the, the teachers at Pell are, or the ones overseeing the four, five groups. So this year, it's, it's a five group at Thompson, led by, uh, one of our science teachers, and then the six through eight group led by our same science teacher. And then, of course, the, the high school has two teachers doing the nine through 12. Um, but it, you know, it, it is a very popular program and it's, uh, you know, it's very creative. Uh, the students love it. Uh, we usually have a great turnout for pa- for, with parents when the students are presenting their, um, their different projects. So, um, but, you know, and it, it depends on any given year on how many students that we have. I know that last year, when we started the school year off and we did not have a facilitator at the high school, a number of parents reached out to me and, you know, I put out another, um, request and, uh, you know, one of our Thompson, I mean, uh, Rogers teachers came forward. So that was great. And, uh, and then they also, uh, students have an opportunity for a college scholarship through this program. And so we were thrilled that, uh, one of our students at the high school was able to get the SMILE scholarship, uh, for college. So, uh, you know, so it does, um, a lot of these children start in fourth grade and would go right up through the high school in this, in this program. So.
That's good. So it's a manageable number then? Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Dr. Bean? Yep, Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
I had asked the superintendent this over the weekend, but I was just curious if we have, um, any data or stories or testimonials from our students who've, um, participated in the program and, and maybe what they've gone on to do, um, in college or, you know, how, if they enjoyed this, how much they enjoyed it or not. Um, I believe Dr. Jermaine said the director, the SMILES director has a lot of this information, but if we have anything specific to like what our Rogers and Thompson students have, have thought about the program, I'd just love to know.
Yes, Stephanie, that, that's great. I don't have the testimonials prepared for the presentation.
I figured you wouldn't. I was just, as a follow up, if you, when you have time. That would be great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Nash, if you could conduct a roll call vote to approve the, uh, SMILES agreement as presented this evening.
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Terrific. Thank you. Uh, next item is 3.5. It's a request for approval of a contract between Newport Public Schools and Perkins School for the Blind. Uh, this is a contract which provides services, uh, for students who require instruction from an ori- uh, from an orientation or mobility specialist as well as a teacher of the ver- uh, visually impaired. These services are required as part of, um, required services for a student. Uh, this contract is funded through the local budget. So is there a motion to approve the contract as presented this evening?
So moved.
Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatwright. Uh, and I believe, uh, Director Andrade is with us if we need, um, questions or any information on the contract. Is that Director Andrade just unmuted? Oh.
I think we did one similar to this in our last meeting for the summertime too, right?
Right. Do you wish her to speak? She is on. She's just waiting to see.
Oh, no, I'm saying, are there any questions? That's all. I was, I believe she's with us if needed, but I didn't know if there were any questions. Uh, seeing none, I would ask, uh, Mrs. Nash to do a roll call vote for approval of the contract with the Perkins School, uh, for the blind.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, 3.6 is request for approval of an agreement between Newport Public Schools and Great Schools Partnership. Uh, this is a contract as presented for services during the 2020, 2021 school year. This is part of the Grade Six through Twelve Comprehensive Literacy Grant, which is working on new year, uh, new English Language Arts Curriculum. Funding is, uh, provided through the Six through Twelve Comprehensive Literacy Grant. Is there a motion to approve, uh, the request as presented this evening? Doc, uh, Mr. Boatwright and seconded by Ms. Winslow is, uh, Dr. Bean, if you want to just give us a, uh, overview of the work, uh, that's happening here and, um, answer any questions. But if we start with an overview, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Great School Partnership, uh, we contracted with them last year to, um, start the, uh, training of the curriculum liaisons at Thompson. It was the first year, um, in a number of years that we actually had all four departments covered. Uh, so the Great School Partners did training with the curriculum liaisons. Those are the, um, teacher leaders in the four content areas, ELA, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies. This year, um, we are partnering with Great School Partners to continue that work, uh, that curriculum work, um, with the grades in those departments as part of our, um, our literacy grant. Part of our literacy grant is not just adopting new English curriculum, um, K to 12. It is also supporting and providing professional development for our content teachers, our science, social studies, and math teachers, um, a- along with our special ed teachers and our English language learner teachers. So, uh, Great School Partners, um, will be working with us, uh, using the proficiency learning system that we've been using to upgrade our units of study. Uh, they're also, um, adding another component this year, uh, that I've been working on with them to, um, include racial equity into the, um, the professional development. This was one of the pieces in our rubric when we submitted our million dollar grant to RIDE for the literacy grant. Uh, when we did the needs assessment, the, um, racial equity and, um, and also, uh, multi-tiered levels of support were two areas that we needed to work on in Newport. Uh, and so the, um, Great School Partners is going to really fill, um, a great need for the, the middle school.
I have a question.
All right, Ms. Bowlen, go right ahead.
Will all the teachers be participating or is this like a voluntary thing? Is it, is it part of PD? Maybe you could explain how it's gonna be.
Yeah. So thi- this is absolutely not voluntary. This is part of our, our literacy grant. Uh, and the, um, no, the, the whole part of this literacy grant, like I just mentioned, is comprehensive. So, uh, it includes all teachers, not just the English teachers, or not just the reading teachers. It's all teachers.
So, yeah, anytime you think you're alone in last year or whatever.
Andy? Okay, thank you.
No, I think somebody, they muted it. So, um, uh, any other questions for Dr. Bean? I am not seeing any. So if I could ask Mrs. Nash to do a roll call vote, uh, for approval of the agreement, uh, before us this evening.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatwright?
Aye.
Ms. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. I have seven zero.
Thank you. Uh, following up, uh, now on that is 3.7, and it's a request for approval of the District Literacy Plan. Uh, the District Literacy Plan has been developed in collaboration with the Hill, Hill for Literacy, RIDE, uh, and a team of K through 12 Newport Public School teachers. The plan is presented for consideration this evening. Is there a motion to approve the plan as presented?
So moved.
Uh, I believe that was, uh, Ms. Bowlen, seconded by Ms. Winslow. Uh, and I believe, uh, Dr. Bean, uh, can give us an overview of this as well.
Sure. Uh, thank you, Ray. The part of the, uh, District ELA Grant, I, all districts that receive the grant, um, whether you got the K through five or the six through 12 grant, or our pre-K grant, um, every district needed to work in the summer with the Department of Ed, and they contracted with Hill for Literacy to work with the districts to develop a literacy plan. I invited, um, K to 12 teachers, uh, to be part of the work. Uh, we met, uh, for a week with, um, the Department of Ed and Hill for Literacy. Uh, we had 19 teachers and administrators doing this work this summer. It was the first week in August. And we worked on, um, i- i- you know, in your backup, there were five, um, priority goals to the literacy plan. Leadership, um, multi-tiered instruction that I mentioned earlier in the other proposal was an area that pretty much all districts in the state, um, found in their needs assessment that, um, that needed to be part of their literacy plan. Professional learning assessment and family engagement. So, uh, this team of 19, um, colleagues, uh, we worked on this literacy plan this summer, and those were our, um, our five goals that we worked on. So the very first thing that we need to do is to start designing, um, the district leadership team dates, uh, to start meeting, and then each building will have their own, um, building-based team. And then we, we will start working on, on the different action steps, uh, that we designed as part of this literacy plan.
Thank you. I see Ms. Winslow has a question for Dr. Bean. Go right ahead.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm, I'm just having a hard time understanding how the District Literacy Plan and the Great Schools Partnership work, um, work together. If you could help me understand the relationship between the two and the responsibilities, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sure. So the, um, the literacy plan, uh, is creating a structure for the district in terms of looking at those five goals. The, the Great School Partners, along with Sizer, who works for Rogers, those two consultants are going to be supporting the literacy grant, uh, that, the piece of the literacy grant that talks about content literacy. Those are the, those are the, um, your science, your social studies, your math teachers, your special ed teachers. These are the teachers that aren't directly teaching English, but need to be versed in strategies around literacy. It, it goes to the old saying that everyone is a reading teacher, you know, even though you're teaching social studies content, you need to be masterful in how to teach reading. So part of the literacy grant that we got, the million dollars that we got for six through 12, we had to show a commitment on how we were gonna support the teachers beyond our English and reading teachers. And so Great School Partners is doing that work with us at Thompson, and Sizer is doing that work, um, at Rogers. Those are, those are two established partnerships. So, you know, we wanted to keep those partnerships, um, going because they've already established some great, um, connections at both schools. So that's how Great School Partners is separate from this literacy plan.
Okay, thank you. That helps a lot. Thank you very much.
I think, uh, Mrs. Neary, I see some of you out there. Ms. Neary is next, and then I'll, I'll get the rest of you. Thank you.
Um, I, I think I'm gonna piggyback on Ms., uh, Winslow, because as I, I'm, I still don't really understand, and maybe it's just late. I don't, that's not true. What I, what it seems to me, as I, I read those, both the Great Schools and the District Literacy Plan, is that this is really professional development. It's, because I don't see the immediate direct impact, immediate direct impact on the students. I don't read the name of a tool that we're using. I don't see strategies that we're using in the classroom. So am I correct in understanding that this is really professional development? Large professional development, a lovely grant for professional development, but that's what it is. Is that, am I understanding that correctly? Because that's, I was, I was also a little bit stuck. I was like, where is the impact on students? Immediate impact. I understand that in the future, that's, I got stuck here too.
So, you know, it, it is, it, this grant is a lot. Uh, you know, it's a, it's a very big grant. And so within the grant, there is, there's multiple pieces to it. One, for sure, is professional development. Professional development for the, the teachers that are gonna be teaching the, the curriculum that we decide to adopt. Uh, and then professional development for our content teachers. But another big piece of this grant is also to really dig in on what, looking at our data and what are those key issues that we really need to address based on, you know, what, what our sho- what our students are showing in, in our local testing, our state testing. Uh, so there's that piece of the grant as well. So that, looking at that data around, the biggest area that we know we need to work on is the writing. Writing is the, is the huge piece. Writing is where all the hard work is, where all the hard thinking is. So, you know, that is a, a big focus of which tools, to your point, Ida, that, you know, you know, so where, where is the impact for kids? So the work that we've been doing K to eight is researching the curriculum that we feel is gonna have the biggest impact for our students. And the biggest area that we know we need to work on is the writing, um, as well as making sure we're making our content comprehensible for our growing, um, population that needs ELL support. So the other piece of this grant is adopting a curriculum. And right now, you know, with, with the K to eight gang, we're in a little bit of a hold on moving on the next steps with the adoption of that curriculum. The nine through 12 group is just going to start their research, um, on a curriculum. So, you know, we, we So, you know, we, we have different grade level groups in different places throughout this grant. That's why it was, you know, quite a big grant to write because each grade level, level group is in a different spot.
Okay, can I ask a clar-
I don't know if that answered your question or just maybe you have more-
Well, it, it does, it does to a certain extent. So when do you think, so there's two, there's two, like, there's two grade level groups. Um, I guess that's, in terms of timeline, when, when do you think that students in the classroom K-12 will see an impact, a real honest to goodness impact in the writing, um, in helping in the content areas? That's the part that I, I just don't understand. As I read it, I just read a lot of, we're going to meet about this, we're going to think about it as a team. We're, we're going to make, there's, there's a nice part on there about explaining things to parents. I, I like all that, but what I don't see is when will, when will a student in the Newport Public School sit in a classroom and that teacher has benefited from, you know, this grant? And we can feel the impact of it. Like which academic year are we looking at? Is, that's the part that I'm missing. I, I see the planning. I don't see execution. I, I don't know when the ninth grader, person who's a ninth grader today, will, will they see this next year? In, will it, will it be reflected in their curriculum next year? Will it be reflected in how the teacher teaches next year? Or is that ninth grader will see the effect of all of this when they're in 11th grade? That's the part I'm missing. That I just, I'm, my brain is not computing the impact on students. Oh, I guess the, the timeline of the impact on student.
So, you know, the, the timeline has, uh, for the K to eight has been delayed a bit due to the fact that we went out in March and we did not implement our pilot. So we're, we're trying to work that out right now. Um, I had every grade level K to 12 introduce our two vendors. Um, so we had professional development this summer. So everyone could see the two vendors that we are looking to possibly pilot. Um, we've done, you know, so we've been doing a lot of work K to eight and trying to get nine to 12 caught up with us as they start to do their own research. So to answer your question, I would hope to have a decision with nine through 12 by the end of this year, so that we're implementing a full new curriculum K to 12 by the end of this year.
By the end of this academic year. So, right, so that a child starting-
Next year would be-
Fall 2021 would be implementing a new curriculum that has basically gone through this process this year that, you know, with the teams and everybody. So that's what we're looking at, fall 2021.
Correct.
For, and that, is that for K eight, that's only for K eight and then nine, 12, you would think, or is it K eight, or is it K 12?
K 12.
K 12. Okay. Thank you. That's what I wanted. For all 2021, we can, we can see the fruits of all this labor. Okay.
That's the goal. That's the goal.
That's, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? I don't see any. I don't hear any. So, uh, Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote to approve the literacy plan as presented, uh, this evening.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Ms. Boatright?
Aye.
Ms. Boland?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero. Thank you, everyone.
Mr. Gomes, may I say something?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Bean, and yes, Dr. Jermaine.
I just want to thank Dr. Bean and all the teachers that during the summer kept all this work going and moving forward to the nineteen principals, teachers, everyone. It's been critical in order to move our curriculum forward. So I just want to thank them for all their efforts and their hard work. So, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bean.
Thank you. Thank you all. Uh, the next item is three point eight. It's a request for approval of resolution to name the Pell Gymnasium in honor of Paul Gaines, uh, presented by Mrs. Boland. Uh, there's a resolution, uh, before you for approval. Is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Uh, Mrs. Boland, is there a second? I see Ms. Boatright. Uh, so with the motion and a second, I would ask Mrs. Boland if she could read, uh, the resolution uh, as it's presented.
So I would like to be, read it tonight, but I'm having difficulty pulling up board docs and watching, uh, on the device.
I have, I have no problem reading it for you. I have it right here. So, uh, the resolution that is before you and for the public, uh, is as follows. Whereas the Honorable Paul L. Gaines, former mayor of the city of Newport, passed away on June 25th, 2020. And whereas Mr. Gaines, who was born in Newport, Rhode Island, attended Newport Public Schools and graduated from Xavier University of Louisiana in 1955 with a bachelor's degree in education. And whereas Mr. Gaines taught social studies, health and physical education at Thompson Junior Middle School, Junior High School, excuse me, and history at Rogers High School. And whereas Mr. Gaines served on the Newport School Committee from 1968 to 1972. And whereas Mr. Gaines in 1977 became the first African-American elected to the Newport City Council. And in 1981, his fellow council members elected him as chairman of the city, chairman of the city council and mayor of Newport. Mayor Gaines was the first African-American mayor in New England. And whereas Mr. Gaines excelled as an all-state athlete in basketball and baseball and later served the Rogers, as Rogers, as the Rogers head basketball coach. In 2002, he was inducted into the Newport Sports Hall of Fame and therefore be it resolved that the Newport School Committee wishes to honor Mayor Paul L. Gaines by naming, I believe they're supposed to be by the naming of the Pell School Gymnasium to the Paul L. Gaines Gymnasium, along with his photograph, so that all Newport Elementary students will know of Mayor Gaines' extraordinary life and his contributions to the city of Newport and the Newport Public Schools. That is the resolution as presented this evening and introduced by Mrs. Boland.
Okay, so, um, this resolution was actually recently passed by our city council unanimously. And, um, they actually made a commitment of, uh, $50,000 to the Pell Technology Fund over the, over the next few years. They, and, uh, so we were asked to do the same. But right now for the, for the Newport Public Schools, it's very difficult because we have no idea what this year is going to hold in terms of, uh, you know, our financial commitments for COVID and, you know, extra costs. So we're going to hold off at this time committing any money to that, to that, uh, fund. It's not that we're opposed to it because that money all comes back to us. That fund right now, which I'm going to tell you, um, Mr. Robert, or Dr. Robert Powers has been working on since Pell opened and it's called the Pell Technology Fund. And it, and every year, um, starting with this year, it's going to start paying back to, um, Pell. Uh, and it goes into perpetuity and that fund is controlled, I think, by the city of, of Newport. So, well, I want to thank him first of all for all his hard work, but most of all, it couldn't go to a more deserving gentleman than Mr. Gaines. I had no idea until after he died of the contributions that he made to education in this city. And, um, and he should be a role model for all students. So I hope we proudly put up that, that picture and it's, and it's a huge picture. And we can all explain to our kids at school about his, you know, really extraordinary life. And, um, I know that Mrs. Gaines too, who served on the Newport School Committee for, uh, probably over 12, 14 years. And now she still continues to serve on the state, um, Board of Education. So, uh, anyway, it's just a, it's, it's a huge accomplishment, you know, um, for him to have done everything he did in his life. And I'm, I'm proud to sponsor this, uh, and as with the rest of our school committee.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Boland. Is there a, um, yeah, I see Dr. Flowers and then I'll get everybody. I see some other hands up, but Dr. Flowers, go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, I had, you know, been aware of this way back when Dr. Power called uh, to float the idea around. I said, well, it was one of those win-win situations. We, uh, it's the, the ideal place to have Paul Gaines' name on because of his devoting his life to education, being an excellent athlete himself. And, you know, many of our young people, they will see him and say, oh, hey, you know, this is something that I can do too. I am somewhat, I'm going to say disappoint. This probably not the way, but concerned that we are, um, not looking at even putting into a future, um, allocation of the matching funds. Uh, this year is going to be tough. We know that. Maybe the next couple of years. Is it possible to add to this, not in that result, not in the whereas, whereas's and all of that? But I would like to see the intention of the Newport School Committee allocating, stretch it out over a number of years. It can be done. That this comes back to us anyway, to us, meaning Newport Public Schools. I, I think that we should still, uh, in good faith and again, in cooperation with the council, which has been extremely cooperative with us. I think we should be part of the allocating funds too. Because it's going to go back to, to the kids eventually.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Boatright?
Yeah, on the allocating of funds, because it just goes in one hand and out the other one. I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's because we have some money in our, um, technology account. But what I wanted to say is on the Paul Gaines, I think it's nice to have a picture up there with a plaque, but I'd really like to dedicate a specific day to be a day of celebration where actually the plaque is actually read to all students. And that becomes a, an annual ceremony to really showcase it. Because so often you put a plaque on the wall and people just walk by it and they don't even notice it anymore. So I'd like to have, uh, Dr. Jermaine and, um, um, Mrs. Westerman and so on come up with a way to actually have that as a tradition to celebrate, um, the Paul Gaines Gym, Gymnasium, along with his accomplishments and have it read out as a true model. So that's my ask.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, any other comments? I would say that, uh, I am more than honored, uh, to support the resolution tonight. I think it's very deserving of, uh, what Mr. Gaines, Mayor Gaines, Paul Gaines, whatever name you call him by, uh, did for us, uh, and, uh, his contribution civically, uh, providing for the education of our students. Uh, the role model, every, every aspect of his life, uh, is to be commended. As to the, uh, monies appropriated to the, uh, technology account, those accounts were primarily, if you remember and you recall, they're set up so that we don't necessarily, or to provide for funds that we can't necessarily allocate out of our budget. Those were set up to be separate and to support our budget, both in technology and needs for the schools. So, you know, part of me, while I understand the commitment to it, I also understand that those, uh, were intent for the monies to come from other places. And, uh, so it's sort of in my mind, almost kind of productive to donate the school funds, uh, to the account uh, because they were set up for just that reason, to, to be able to do things outside of the school budget uh, as we're able to fund things. So, um, that's my concern. And, uh, again, I, I am more than honored, uh, at the resolution. And, uh, that's just my thoughts on the allocation of the funds to the technology account. Um, are there any other comments or that any other members would like to make? Or I see a couple of hands that haven't spoke yet. So Mrs. Neary?
Um, yes. So I just, I want to say that I'm fully in support of the resolution. I think it couldn't happen to a better person in, um, in Newport. So it, it, it's a little bit of a no-brainer. It's a little surprising. We haven't done it, uh, before, but that's what happens. Um, I would be interested in the allocation of funds. I'd be interested, you know, in knowing how the city is doing it. You know, what is the mechanism by which they are able to do the allocation of fund? And is that an avenue that is open to us? Um, because if it is, then maybe we can use the same avenue and then have, um, um, and, and do the same thing as they are doing. So for me, that's it. I'd like to know how they are doing it. And is this, is this something that we can do as well?
Can I answer that for you? I, I think I might have the answer.
Good.
Okay, so, um, the city, uh, they directed the, um, Mr. Nicholson, the city manager, to decide how that $50,000 will be designated and over what period of time. So they, they put the onus on him to figure out when, uh, you know, it could be best afforded by the city. So there's no exact date or time or, you know, other than the $50,000 over, uh, a period of time.
But where is the 50 coming from?
They, they, um, asked Mr. Nicholson to figure that out.
Uh, Dr. Jermaine, would you like to take that on? Just joking.
So, uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. Winslow?
Sorry. Um, I'm, I, I think I'm in between a lot of feelings on the money part. I'd rather just not look at it right now, I suppose. Um, I'd like us to be able to get this year going and see how it plays out. Um, certainly not opposed, but I think the school department is just under a lot of financial stress right now. And I'm not sure this is one more thing we want to add to the plate, but I, maybe I would like to set a timeline to like come back to it. Um, just so, because I think the intention is, is that we want to support this. Um, and, but I just don't want us to get ahead of, ahead of ourselves. I, there's going to be so many unknown priorities this year. Maybe that's the same tactic that the city took. So maybe we should find out, like Ms. Neary says, how the city's handling it and, and then we can look at it. But I don't want to put our administrators under a lot of pressure to figure this out when, you know, they're trying to order HEPA filters and fans and keep windows open and it's just, so it's just crazy. Um, the second thing I want to say is that I hope that we don't stop at just a gym for Mr. Gaines. He did so much for Newport civically, um, in education, as just a leader, so selfless. I want him to be remembered for more than just athletics. Um, so I think everybody's on board with that. And so I just want us, wanted to say it out loud. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Flowers?
Okay, one more comment. I, it's interesting. I'm glad Mrs. Boland mentioned how the, the, um, city managers charged with finding out how this can be done. And no, we're not going to put that on Dr. Jermaine. Um, I mean, if one of us, I'll raise my hand. If one of us want, at some time, not this week, but in a reasonable time, even say meet with, uh, the city manager and say, how are you folks looking, looking at this? Uh, just to give us advice as they do with a lot of other things, um, that we can kind of say research, but really examine the situation and say, hey, we're going to be around, we, the, the system is around for a long while and say that within the- And say that within the foreseeable future, doesn't have to be the next two or three years, but in the foreseeable future, we can perhaps do some kind of additional fundraising to put that amount into that account. I just don't want to see it just dumped and just only put on the council to contribute. This one, this one, this second big. This was this was explained to me what the process was going to be probably a month and a half, two months ago, when I first heard about this. And I don't want it to be put to one side permanently. Of course, I mean, it's like you say, it's a no-brainer. We're naming the the gym for for Paul Gaines because he was just immersed his life in education and also providing for young people the various pathways to succeed. And I don't want to see the the rest of the plan just sort of fading away. If if you, I mean, if I can be of some help in sitting down, talking maybe with Dr. Power and Mr. Nicholson. You know, this is something that can be done.
So I could, my thought is, I don't want anything to get in the way of a 7-0 vote on on passing this Paul Gaines. But I also think we could maybe we could add something to it or do this separately, that we just relook at things in July, when we know where we, you know, or June, like the June meeting, when we know where we are and we can bring it back up. But I don't know if that should be a separate, and I don't want to put it out there right now. But, you know, it's just something we can do.
Nope. Mr. Larry, just one second. I'm going to get to you. I know you're trying to get in there. I have a note here, and my plan is next month, under discussion, we will have Dr. Powers come. He can give us a presentation on why the technology fund was started, where it's at to date, contributions. I know that there's some money planning to come to the school. So I think I have a note here. I'll talk with Mrs. Nash and we'll add it next month as a discussion item. And we'll bring Mr. Power here. You can all ask him your questions. And he can give a presentation on how the account was set up, the intent of the account, where it stands to date, and we'll at least have that guidance going forward as we make decisions not to let it fall by the wayside.
Great.
So I do have that note on my little
Great idea.
pad of notes. So I know Mr. Leary's been trying to chime in. So Mr. Leary?
Yeah, no, it's hard, you know, seeing me and I'm asking, thank you. That you just helped me out. I was gonna propose amendment to the resolution that we put $5,000 a year into it and evaluate it at the end of three years if we need it. Just to remind the people, we have a $45 million budget. If you put $5,000 and X amount of money just to be allocated for this thing coming forward in the future. Those who didn't do well on math, you can figure it out. I'll give you a calculator. $5,000 of a $45 million budget. But I'm very satisfied what you said, Mr. Gomes. I'll wait till Mr. Powers comes, and then maybe I'll make that amend the motion one night or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, Mrs. Nash, could you do a roll call vote on the approval of the resolution as presented this evening?
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlin?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. 7-0.
That's terrific. Thank you. Next item is 3.9, request for approval of the Medbot software subscription agreement. Medbot is a software platform which allows for daily health screening for employees and students through a mobile app and web portal. The service is provided at a cost of 50 cents per person per month. Estor funds will be used for this purchase. And Director Andrade is with us, has a has provided has provided the agreement for consideration tonight and approval. And I know she is with us to answer questions, which I know a couple of you have. So is there a motion to approve the agreement as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, is there a second?
A second, so we can talk about it.
That's very good. Thank you. So the motion's been made and seconded. And I think Director Andrade, if you can give us a little more information on it, then I will open the floor up to questions from the school committee. Doctor, I don't, I don't know if I see.
I'm checking right now. She was on.
I see some participants that I'm not sure of who they are, but I'm not sure of any particular phone numbers. So I'm not sure how she was.
No, the director was on, so. I don't know if she's having trouble on muting.
Does Mrs. National, if she is on and having difficulty muting?
I'm not seeing her.
I do not see her. I'm talking out to her right now.
She just said she is on.
Huh. Could we ask her to, we'll give her a minute and have her try to log back in? We'll give her a couple of minutes and if not, we could give her a couple of minutes. If not, we'll hold this item and then just move on in the meeting until we have her back with us. But
Okay.
We'll give her a couple.
Okay, so would you like me to explain what Medbot is for the audience?
You could do that if you want to give us some some information while we're we're waiting.
All right. So part of the requirements from the for returning back to schools, to make sure you have some kind of system where staff and families can check in and do, I'll call it a COVID check. And you check off whether you have any of these symptoms. And then you also check off if you've been to a place that has high incidence rate of COVID or if you've traveled out of the country, etc. It has, the reason we went to an app was to make it easy for families to be able to, on their phone, they can actually have an alarm on it. So if you don't fill it out, it will beep and let you know you need to still fill this out. You need to go further. When you fill it out, just for the audience, FYI, the screen will then go yellow or red to let you know you can go into work or you can go go into school. It also helps to follow as far as trending, if, you know, for data purposes. It has been vetted, is used by other schools. And it was a device we sought out relatively inexpensive and meaning total for the entire year, I don't believe is more than 12K, as the director told me. And it will be reimbursable by funds. There's multiple ways to access it. You can download it on your phone, which everyone's not comfortable doing that. You can go to the URL address, which is on our website. It's posted now on our page. And you can access it through there. So if you don't want it on your computer or if you don't want it in another way, you can get it in that way as well. That's what I know about it. And I think Director Andrade is trying, she can't get off mute, Kathy, for some reason. I'm asking her last two numbers.
We'll see what Kathy can offer.
I'm not able to unmute her. I just gave her directions on, hopefully she can she can do it. She's on it. Just waiting for a response.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So while we were stalling, if you will, for you to come on, Dr. Jermaine did answer a few questions or gave a little overview. I don't know if you want a minute to give a give the same or if you just want to open to questions.
Yeah, I know. That was a great summary of the of the plan. So if anybody has any questions, then I will do my best to try to answer those.
Okay, I know there's a couple. Mrs. Neary?
Ms. Neary, you're on mute?
It's a common problem.
Okay, and I'm right here. There you go. I think Director Andrade, bear with me, because I have a few questions. And I think I would like the attorney as well. So my first, the first question I have is just a simple information or what other districts in Rhode Island are using Medbot? I would like to know that. So that's one. That's just a basic question. My larger concern.
Could could I just ask, could we answer them one at a time, just so that we don't lose any?
Okay.
Any kind of, so if you could just, there you go.
Who else in Rhode Island is using my Medbot?
So I can't tell you how many other districts are doing it, but I know right in Newport, St. George is also using it.
Okay, so.
And that's actually how we found it, was because our school nurse also is a school nurse for St. George, and she was using it with them.
Okay, great, because that actually explains why they picked it. And it explains, well, but it also explains my concern. I will tell you my concern. And I read the contract. My Medbot SARRL is out of Luxembourg. And they are protected by, so anybody signing the contract is protected by GDPR. GDPR is not a privacy rule that is that applies to Americans in the United States. And to me, so it makes sense for them, right? Because for St. George's, they have European students. They need to have the right to to erase themselves data-wise. So they had to hire somebody that does that. So it makes sense that they would hire a company from Luxembourg, which would guarantee that their students, once they return, that European students in the United States could have their data removed from any kind of data set. And it also makes sense that when they return to Europe, they could also ask that question. That does not apply to American students in the United States. So all the privacy stuff that they say, which is really truly amazing, does not apply to our students. So that was the biggest red flag for me. I'm like, GDPR does not apply to Americans in the United States. So I would like our attorney to take a look at it because we went through that a year and a half ago at Salve, when GDPR was passed in Europe. So that's, I like, that's a really, I have a really big, big, big problem with that.
I'd be happy to. I haven't had the opportunity or been asked to look at it yet, so I'd be happy to look at it.
Thank you, because that's really my, that's my biggest one. Setting that aside, why are we not using the Crush COVID app from the state of Rhode Island? Which its newest iteration, which so it was updated last Friday, has a set of questions that gets pushed out every day. And then if, and then you either get a, what is it? You get a green check mark if you're fine and you don't have symptoms. And you have a, you get a red frowny face if you cannot go into school and to work into whatever. So why are we not using that? Now, mind you, to be fair, they only updated it last week.
Right, so that's what, that's why we didn't use it, because it wasn't available.
Okay.
And our, and the Medbot app does the same thing with the red and the green.
Right.
It tells you whether you can arrive or not. Yeah.
Right. Okay, so could we discuss taking a look at the Crush COVID? I don't know that it has a email notification the way that my Medbot does. So I will be blunt on that. I don't know that it has that. I just have the app on my phone. But that's that's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern is the privacy, the privacy law. And I will not vote for this, under this privacy contract, absolutely not. No way.
So I assume that's the end of your questions?
That's the end.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Winslow, I think you.
Yeah, I I was also concerned with privacy and just the fact that I don't see how we could force anybody to download this app and use it. And therefore, that's going to undercut our ability to even use the results, I guess. And the attestation, I don't know. I see Colleen shaking her head. But my concern is that if people object, then, you know, what's what's the point in having a solution that maybe only 30% of our parents and teachers adopt? I'm just making that number up. I was curious to know, like, if RIDE recommended something. I know some other districts are using Aspen. And maybe that's not as convenient, but it's perhaps something we already subscribe to and it's free. And I think the privacy concerns would be dealt with by using Aspen. This is going to be a tough, tough task to get people to adhere to. And even, you know, whether or not we agree with all the rules and regulations and requirements for COVID, I'm going to do what the experts are asking. I believe that we need to do what they're asking of us, from wearing a mask to filling out this attestation every day. So I want to find a solution, but I I think we might just want to look at the cheap and popular option, I suppose, instead of something that really could could risk, you know, our our students and faculty data going anywhere.
So just to address the Aspen, we were originally considering Aspen, but there are several steps that are required in order to access Aspen. And what we found out during remote learning in the spring was that we only had about 25% of our families who even went on Aspen to look at a report card. So we didn't think that that was a viable option. Additionally, it doesn't come in any other languages. Aspen is in English. And Medbot comes in any language we want it in. So that was one of the reasons that really drew us to that is so that we can ensure that families can access Medbot in their native language.
Director Andrade, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Dr. Jermaine.
Director Andrade, I just wanted to clarify. I know you heard me share a big overview. But if I'm correct, people can go to the URL exact and don't have to download it. Am I correct?
That is correct. And we actually put a like a quick link right on the homepage to the Newport Public School on the homepage for the website. There's a link right there and they can click on it and it brings it right to them. They can log in and they'll have, they'll be able to do it right from there, too. So I believe that the technology department is also looking at putting a bookmark into the Chromebook. Not a dashboard, what do they call it? A little section on the top there, bookmarking it. Sorry, I'm not a techie.
It's going to be the same as an app, so. Whether you enter the data through, you know, their website or a browser or use the app on the phone, it's the same destination.
Yes. Yeah. And so what it also does is collect longitudinal data for us. We can look at trends. We can pull really quick reports from it by school, by grade, so that we know when we have a student who's been flagged as at risk. It gives us the opportunity to quickly pull that information out so that we can contact those families and make sure that they're following up with their doctor.
Ms. Winslow, go right ahead.
All right. I'm not sure if my big monologue a minute ago included the question if RIDE had any recommendations for how to complete this requirement.
Nope, they just said do it.
That's common, that's common through the COVID for the state and RIDE. Just do it and ask permission.
That's true.
Doc, Mrs. Bowlen.
Yes, I'm, I'm inclined to go with Mrs. Neary and be overly, you know, be very cautious. I know that, that the Teachers Association is looking into this too. Many, I got many phone calls from people who were just concerned about its safety. Although I do understand that they did have it so that it links to their, their school accounts and not, they don't have to link it to their home account. But, so I do have to ask the question. I know that it's somewhat launched already and that parents all know about it. What would it do if, if we put a hold on this? How is that, you know, going to affect what's going on? So that's my question to, to our superintendent and to, to anybody who wants to answer.
I mean, right now, this is what we have. So if we didn't have this, we'd have to come up with another system. I think as an administrative team, we've talked a lot about using Aspen, but, you know, I kind of spoke to that a little bit already as to why we ruled that out as an option. So, you know, I don't know, we'd have to come up with something completely new. And then what do we do in the meantime when we have no way of finding out that information from our families and staff? I don't know.
On the Aspen component, can I ask, did, did we contact Aspen to see why it's only in English and not offered in other languages?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware if anyone contacted them, but everyone knows, meaning other districts in the state, understand and know that that's part of the challenge when it's only in English for districts that need another language. So.
And I also, go ahead, go ahead. Nope, go ahead, finish your thought.
So, well, no, go ahead. I'll hold. Thank you.
No, I think that's important with Aspen only because Aspen communicates with our families in other ways. And it's an interesting topic that if we did need communication to go out on other things and I have been, so maybe something we look in aside from this, but that's just my thought on the Aspen component. Dr. Jermaine, if you had some thoughts, go ahead. I have a couple of questions, but if you have thoughts.
I'm sorry, this is just coming up now and, because we could have stopped it or not done it if there were these concerns. So, and I know Director Andrade and others looked into this thoroughly. We will look into the concerns on the privacy and we tried to look at other things. What we'd have to do right now is then shut it down. And we'll have to go to some other kind of forum. Because if the, these are concerns and to me, they're, again, wish, well. So at this point in time, I think we'd have to shut it down and would have to look at, to an alternative, whether it's paper, whether it's thumbs up, thumbs down. When a child arrives, they feel good before they get on the bus or not. I don't, I will say this as far as staff. I know staff wanted to make sure we had something in place for, before children arrive in the building. But, you know, we got to be flexible. We'll figure something out and we'll move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a, okay, Dr. Flowers, go ahead. And then I have a couple of questions.
I was going to say, it seems, if I'm listening correctly, the main concern is the privacy issue. And that students who are from other countries, they can delete all of their information. But you can't hear. I think it's what Mrs. Neary was saying.
She can, she's saying yes, giving you a thumbs up, but.
Okay, yeah. Because the Crush COVID, you can delete a lot, you know, and they do have the whole privacy thing all written there. As far as other languages, I mean, I never thought about it. I'm just, I've been poking through here to see if that can be done in other languages, but I don't know the, I mean, how the technology works, this Medbot. I mean, it, you know, I'm just looking at something abstractly here now. But I can understand the privacy issues, but you just set it up and everything.
No, that's, I want to be very clear. That is not my concern. My concern is now I'm hearing this and that is what my concern is. And we will, as I said, we will be flexible. We will figure something out going forward. But this is, that is my concern. And I'm available anytime if anyone wants to speak to me.
Yeah, we have students from other countries. They might be here for a while. A lot of the military, you know, they're here for a few months or maybe a year. So that's the situation, Jim.
So.
Going to be held to you?
Well, let's just continue with the questions and thoughts here and we'll get to that in a minute. Go ahead, Ms. Boatright.
I just want to ask Neil Galvin, our lawyer on this one, like what his concern is and whether we can, because we're kind of into the, we've already started school, whether we could do this for even a short period of time till there's some opportunity to, to maybe in a month, change our direction if needed. But anyhow, as the legal, as our legal advisor.
Well, it sounds like you're being asked to sign and enter into a contract, so that commits you if you proceed along those lines. It's somewhat abstract for me. I need to look at it and review it and see what the language is. But if you commit to a contract, you're committed. It's before you tonight, if you're.
I would just like to clarify that you can cancel the contract at any time without penalty.
Took care of one of my questions. Thank you. Ms. Winslow.
I'm willing to meet another night this week if Mr. Galvin has time to review and, and maybe we have, could we have something added to our contract where our students can have the right to delete their data? That's, I, you know, that's huge. But I mean, I do, I do.
Language, but I'd be happy to do it tomorrow and.
If that's something that the chair or superintendent would, would like, you know, we can work on this right away. And maybe we should vet the Crush COVID app at the same time. And we don't drop it, we swap when we have a substitute. People are already using this, so, you know, big deal. In that sense, I mean, what's done is done. So like if we just find a replacement, and maybe we don't. Maybe we say this is okay, but if we, if we, with Mr. Galvin's help and, and we research the best option. I'm sorry, because Director Andrade, I know you, you did that or felt you've done that. But maybe we just have to get our questions answered and we either stick with this or we, we do make a switch, but we don't just drop it. We, we swap out when we have something to swap.
Thank you. I don't know. Anybody want to comment on that? If not, I have a couple of questions. So one question is, is it possible to get a representative of Medbot before we recess for the evening to answer the concern on the data information that we're concerned with? Do we know? I don't know what Mrs. Neary is showing us, but.
Nice green face.
Do we know if that's a possibility?
To get somebody on the phone right now?
Well, we could hold this item for a minute to get some questions answered, but I'm just in the sense of tonight. My questions were, it's a very long document. I had a couple of things. Now, again, somebody else brought it up. This is a voluntary, that we have no way of knowing how many people will volunteer to do this as well, correct? It's all voluntary?
Well, it would be a requirement.
So everybody.
Right now, we are requesting people to voluntarily do this. Yes. We're asking them to use the Medbot.
But it's a voluntary basis.
It is something we are asking people to do. We have had some people that do not want to do it and we've had discussions today about that.
Okay, so that's one of my questions that I'd like to have answered before really saying yes or nay because it's important to me to know that either you have to participate or you don't. I understand that we're asking. That doesn't mean we're requiring it. And if we do require, again, it goes to the cost of it, are we being billed by the number of people who choose to participate or by our current number of students and staff?
No, the current, the however many accounts are open.
So it's only by the number of people who choose to participate?
That is correct.
All righty. And you sort of answered the question. I wondered about who else in Rhode Island. And I think you've answered my questions. So I am going to look to, Dr. Jermaine, more than happy we have a motion on the table and seconded to vote on this. Or I'm looking to guide for you as to whether you'd like the vote to happen or if you would like to continue this to another time to get more information.
I'm going to now look to the attorney. And I'm going to ask the question, if we put it out there as voluntary for now, is that okay?
Relative to what? What, what do you mean in terms of?
As far as using a screening tool for the district.
As opposed to making it a requirement?
Correct.
And okay if it relates to the state or to the vendor?
I'm not, I'm personally not concerned about the state at this point in time. I am concerned for the, for what was raised tonight. And I don't want to, if someone's feeling uncomfortable about it or if there needs to be further exploration on this, I do not want at this point in time, anyone to feel they must do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to need to look at the language and look at the privacy elements of it to be able to have a feel for that and its impact on breaching their HIPAA rights and all that kind of stuff. And I just don't know the language and I don't even know what the language says relative to canceling it at any time. I'd want to make certain, looking at that as well.
At this, right. At this point in time, I think it would be best if I just send out something saying it's voluntary and it's under review. And like I said, the district will have to be flexible and we'll have to figure something out in the next 12 hours, 15 hours.
Mrs. Neary, do you have a question?
So the question is, we, so at Salve, we use, we have to screen every day as well. And the way it was worded, just for Attorney Galvin's benefit, it isn't, it isn't mandatory. It cannot be made mandatory that we have to, that we have to go through the screening. It's a, it's, I think what you're, what you're saying, you know, it's for the benefit of everybody in the community. It is strongly encouraged. It's, you know, there's, there's all of that language in there. And I can pull it if you want. I'll try to find it. But I'm, I think I am 97% sure that it has, nowhere does it say that it's required. It is not required for employment, nor is it required for students to attend. It is really appealing to people's best, well, to their self-interest. It's like, do you want to know if the person next to you has it? So just self-interest and also for the community. But I can, I can pull the email that they sent us for it. So just to say that, I don't, to Neo and Stephanie's question, I don't think we can make it mandatory. You just have to hope that people do it. And again, it's self-interest. You want to know that the person next to you has taken the test. You really, really want to know that, that they screen themselves.
Thanks. Ms. Boatright.
I would, I would like to ask that, there is some outreach to Medbot to, because I can't believe that St. George is going to have something that doesn't meet HIPAA and, and so on. So before you just flatly change over, I think, you know, like in 12 hours, that means you're doing it overnight. I really think that reaching out to the vendor to really explain what the issues are and see where they stand. So I would really hope that there's not a haste, too hasty decision on going forward with it for just canning this and just exploring with the vendor and being very, very honest with them that these are the issues and how did they address them before you, you know?
No, I, I agree. I just want to be very clear. If there's concerns, I think it's important that, you know, we discuss them. But at the same time, we had to have something in, in play for when school began. And we did have Google Sheets at some of our buildings for our staff. And we can continue that. And then for the children coming in and the families, I just want, you know, we have been asking, please make sure you fill this out. It's very important for health reasons. And I just, I just want to be clear that it's voluntary and I don't want to put anything at risk for anyone. So that's why I'm saying if we have to pivot, we can pivot. And this, Dr. Andrade, Director Andrade and I can further follow up on this. I agree with you about your comments about the institution and their use of it. And I think that's what gave a lot of us, a lot of confidence in its being vetted and part of the vetting process. So. That's where we are.
I put in the chat, the lang, sorry, I put in the chat the language that we, that we as Salve faculty and staff are, you'll see, it's like expected to, it's not, I mean, I don't think it can be made mandatory. I think it would be helpful on the second part, it would be helpful to have Medbot tell us who else is their customer in the United States and how they have, how they have adjusted their contracts for United States for HIPAA laws, for privacy laws in the United States. I mean, you know, there are seven of us and you guys might vote yes. I know for a fact that I'm voting no because the privacy settings, the way they are written, do not protect our students.
So, okay.
I have a question.
Mrs. Bowlen.
Do we want to just, so that we don't, it doesn't go down, should we just take it off the table tonight?
I, I've asked that question, so I'll ask it one more time. And if that's what Dr. Jermaine would like to do, we can table it at her request or we can vote on it. So I'm going to give it to Dr. Jermaine one more time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Feel free to table it. Please table. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes care of that. Yeah, Larry.
Well, I tell you what, how does she know, Mrs. Bowlen know the vote?
There is no vote.
I, I would tend to think that she didn't know. Well, I know that three people have sort of spoke that they're not in favor of it at this time, so that's three of them. The superintendent has asked to table it. We'll table it and we'll get more information and hopefully we can have a vote on it at a later time. Dr. Flowers.
Okay, when you get on the site, I am doing this on my phone here. It says relationship to FERPA and HIPAA. There's a whole, I'm just skimming through it now quickly. But this will tell what they do related to that. So when you start just putting in mymedbot.lu and it gives everything we want to know about that. Yeah. And it'll tell what the relationship is. I mean, I'd have to go. I mean, I'd have to go read it, make some sense out of it. It's a lot of, this is Neil's review, I think, you know, but again, when you're looking at it, you, yeah, you see what they can, what they can do and not do. So it's.
Right. Again, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Again, yes, it does state all that, does state that it follows it. But if there's a concern being raised, I would like, to Mrs. Neary's point,
Yeah.
have that addressed and I apologize for not, again, I would have had this ready in this way. Thank you.
I'm going to add just one thing. If you go onto their website, it does, it says trusted by a bunch of US schools. And if you look at those schools, every single one of them is a private school that accepts international students. And that, I think, is why they are so popular. I just, I just want to be sure that our American, majority of American students are protected. That's all.
Okay, so it, Mr. Larry?
Two things for Mr. Galvin. One, what's the process on this table and thing, Mr. Galvin?
When you say process, someone will make a motion to table, someone will second, and the committee will vote.
Okay, so somebody in the committee has to do that?
That's correct.
Well.
Thank you. Second question. And correct me if I'm wrong, this isn't, we've been talking about this for 45 minutes now and I'm making that number up. I'm sure. At what point, I think in Roberts rules of order, I'm not sure, if you could give us a rule on that. I think that people can only talk twice on subject. And maybe it's wrong about saying this, but could you find out what's the rule on that? Because we've been on this thing for 45 minutes and people have talked three or four times, same people. I'm just really curious what, what your thoughts on that? I'll look it up.
Well, generally, I think that to be determined by the chairman as to how he would like to conduct the meeting. If someone or if anyone feels that the conversation is going too long without substance, there's always the motion to call a question and the committee can vote on that, whether to proceed to a vote on the question or not. So there are some mechanisms to deal with a lengthy discussion process. But I think initially it's up to the chair as to how to allow discussion to occur.
Okay, is that overrules Roberts rules of order?
Well, I think your policies allow for the conduct of the meeting by the chair. And unless something is not dealt with, with your policies and then a question has to be interpreted, you look to guidance from Roberts rules. So until there's a conflict or an issue at stake, your own policies and the conduct of your meetings will control.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, to Mr. Leary's point, I believe the correct terminology is the superintendent has asked that this item be pulled for further review by her and staff. So the item will be pulled from the agenda for this evening and we will move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is section four, which is discussion items. And I'm going to have the superintendent, 4.1 and 4.2 can be, the pre-K update and school reentry plan, I believe, can all be melded into one report that I'll turn over to Dr. Jermaine to give us how we're doing on the first two days and with the pre-K especially. Thank you.
Okay, so we've had two, I don't want to jinx us, things are going well. We've had, you know, the typical, when you start off school, we've had transportation. The buses are starting to get into their routines, getting to know different students and, you know, times and deliveries and pickups, those are all going well. We had the bus company out at all three locations. I was there with other, Mr. Young, Mr. Vance, all the principals, we were all out there. And we got to see children arriving in the morning and children going home at the end of the day. I want to thank Ocean State, Mr. Mergo, Ms. Fahy, all of them for being there at the sites to talk with the principals to see how we can get better and improve. The other thing we had today was, we had a Google outage and, well, we had a Google overload. I'd say it was a nationwide problem because, and I want to thank Ms. Neary and other parents that were helping us throughout the day just to see how the connectivity was working for all our students. And there were some, I'll call them blips, but I think we're going to get better at that as we move forward. And when Google came back up, everything seemed to be running much smoother. Staffing is still something, as far as the reopening, we're still struggling with in the sense of just making sure we have enough bodies in our buildings in order to do coverage and to make sure if we have, we do have some teachers out that are teaching remotely and we make sure we have some subs to help with the classroom management. And we also want to make sure that we keep that a small, stable group. This is a statewide issue and RIDE is working with the school districts to, they're going to set up a substitute pool, working with the universities and colleges, talking with juniors and seniors to see if they'd like to or if they're interested in helping out school systems. The funding for those positions is also reimbursable by COVID and we'll be getting more information on that next week. That was something that was brought up in today's superintendent's meeting. As far as our pre-K classrooms, they have been set up at Pell. We're using the social distancing guidelines. Everyone is set to go, all the classrooms. We're keeping our seats, our six feet apart. We, for the PK over at Pell, we will have peer models, age-appropriate models, coming in mid-October. What we're doing right now is we're working with very small groups to get our students to understand rituals and routines. This week at Pell, Tuesday and Wednesday, grades one and three are in. Grade five at Thompson, using the AB hybrid model, A through M is on Tuesday and Wednesday. And through Z is on Thursday and Friday. And over at Rogers, we have our grade nine students, A through M, Tuesday and Wednesday, and Thursday and Friday, and through Z. Going back to making sure the facilities are all up to standards and making sure that we're following all the CDC and RIDO guidelines. I want to thank Mr. Young because the plant engineers, Mr. Leary, Mr. Turner, Mr. Watts, and Mr. Coin, the places, the facilities look great. They've done a wonderful job. They're, they've got the signage up, they've got the arrows, we've got our one-way hallways. That's all in order. Over at Pell, I want to thank the team over there. That, we have the storage containers and thank you to Mr. Goncalves, who's put that together for us as well. They are over there. They're not the greatest-looking containers. So our art teachers are arranging for decorative murals to be painted on the containers, barring that we have permission and all, or possibly putting some kind of coverage on them to make him look a little bit more appealing. The paving work is complete over in the parking lots on Pell. So the nice part is we do have additional parking over there. So we're entering and re-entering, like I said, so far, so good. It was a very happy day at Pell. As a matter of fact, I sent you a collection of pics. I hope you were able to see that. We're hoping to get more pics from all our kids, those were, that were at home on distance learning, those that were remote today, but it, it's good. It's, it's really good. And I want to thank the teachers, all the teachers that were there, they were outside welcoming students and they were helping all the administrators as far as, especially in Rogers for our grade nine students. That big building was very challenging for them, so it's been a good day.
Anybody have any questions for the superintendent pertaining to school opening or the pre-K? Alrighty. Seeing none, thank you. Don't go far, because the next item is 4.3 and it's a cross-curriculum and content area preview.
Yes.
So there you go.
All right, so Dr. Bean will be coming back next month in October. She's been, as we know, she's wearing two hats. And she's been very focused working with the Thompson team as far as getting Thompson open and ready these past weeks and now these coming weeks. But I just wanted to let you know that you have received and on our website are the documents that show our curriculum. They show our cross-content curriculums and what we're doing here in the Newport Public Schools. And I know as Dr. Bean has already shared with you earlier today, we're really focusing on getting that high-quality curriculum into the hands of our teachers and students. So to help raise the bar for all our students in their learning. So there will be more to come, but I just wanted to put that on the forefront that that has been shared with you as a school committee and it is being shared with our parents. So our parents can see at all the different grade levels what the expectations are for our students and our teachers. So when they're implementing their curriculum, others can see what they're doing and why they're doing it. On our websites, we do have the Year at a Glance, which is a very brief synopsis for each grade level as we go through the years. So we're looking forward to sharing more of the curriculum because we know we're in school, we're here to learn and we want to make that focus of learning a high priority for all our kids and high-quality instruction as well. So that's my little preview of coming attractions.
Any questions based on that discussion item? Alrighty, thank you. That gets us into our next section of the agenda. It's five consent agenda. And first is 5.1, approval of meetings, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented this evening? Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. Any discussion or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, all those, I'll have Ms. Nash do a roll call vote. It'll be easier.
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Great.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers? Dr. Flowers, I think you're on mute. Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is 5.2, request for approval of invoices and requisitions. Is there a motion to accept them as presented? Ms. Boatright makes a motion. Is there a second? Dr. Flowers, any questions or comments on the approval of invoices or requisitions? Seeing and hearing none. Mrs. Nash, if you could do a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Thank you. Next item is 5.3, request for approval of home instruction. Is there a motion to approve the home instruction? Dr. Flowers, is there a second? Ms. Boatright, thank you. Any discussion or questions on the home instruction? Ms. Winslow?
I've had this question, I think, since I started and I just have never answered. But we're always provided with an overview of who has requested home instruction. And I was curious to know if maybe the wording could be changed to list a family and their child instead of their son or their daughter. Just for privacy. And I don't know if there's any reason we might say a family with a son or a daughter, or if that's just the way it's been done. I don't want to ruffle any feathers, but I was just curious.
May I?
Sure.
I, Ms. Winslow, that information is not public.
I'm sorry.
So just for clarity, so that is on our backup, but that, when it's released to the public, that document that we see is not released?
Well, right. That's, I meant for us, what's released for us. Let it be just a family have requested instruction, home instruction for their child. Right now it says son or daughter. So I was thinking along the privacy terms as well.
It's just a language question, just saying their child does not identify the gender.
Yep, we can certainly, we, we can certainly look into it and get the history and make the correction if, if possible.
I mean, do we need to know the gender?
That's what my feeling was and I, it's just something I've kind of thought since starting and we've run out of time mostly at our meetings, but I felt that tonight we had the time, so. I apologize for the very candid question.
No, we can certainly look into that and make the corrections necessary if possible. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, if Mrs. Nash could do a roll call vote to accept the homeschool request as presented.
Mr. Gomes?
Aye.
Mrs. Neary?
Aye.
Mrs. Boatright?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Aye.
Dr. Flowers?
Aye.
Mr. Leary?
Aye.
And Ms. Winslow?
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero.
Great. Next section is correspondence and I believe there are no correspondence for the month. At least none coming up for me, so I believe there are none. Next section that leads us into reports from the superintendent and staff. And the first report in that category, first two reports for Mr. Goncalves, the business manager is 7.1, is the expenditure and revenue report, and 7.2 is restricted grants report. So, Mr. Goncalves, if you want to give a little overview and take questions if there are any.
Sure. Nice to see everyone again this month. Hello. Can I just open it up, two questions with regard to the memo, if that's okay? And/or the expenditure reports? I know there are always some.
That's fine. Yep, they're self-explanatory, so questions would be fine if there are any from the committee. Ms. Neary?
Of course I have questions. It's 7.1, it's on the expenditure report and it's just really clarification. I think I understand, but I wanted to make sure. So 7.1, under general supplies, where were we? A lot, most of my questions are whether or not we're using CARES money for some things and not others. That's really.
I might be able to answer that very easily for you.
Okay.
When we, when we approved our FY 2021 budget, we used CARES ESAR dollars to help our operating dollars for FY 21. So part of the requirement, our reporting requirement in accounting is that that funding stream comes from the federal government. We typically report that in our Fund 21, not in our Fund 10. But, but this year is an anomaly. This year it's helpful in our operating dollars. So what I did was I included that with a color code of purple within the expenditure reports. There are currently three items listed in, in purple and those are kind of my earmarks in communication for us to discuss. That these are what I've earmarked as costs that will be funded with the ESAR component of the CARES Act. The purple color coding.
So it's just a purple color coding, so that actually then, and the thing, the questions I had were not color-coded in purple. So, okay, that's interesting, because I was looking at general supplies and material. So, okay, that's interesting, because I was looking at general supplies and materials. That is a big jump from 2020 unaudited to the adopted budget, of course it's yet. And I was wondering about that jump.
There's a lot of factors in there. There's a lot of factors in there. We were able to capture some expenses from March, April, June that were eligible for CRF of the CARES Act.
Okay.
Okay, so a portion of expenses are not currently listed there, because they were moved from Fund 10 into 21.
Okay.
So this, we're going to constantly remind each other of this, but every time we look now at 2020 data, it's skewed, because we had a global pandemic that stopped us.
So that would then, does that then explain as well natural gas? Presumably, although it's still a big old jump from 2019 and 2017, which are not pandemic years. I mean, I get that 2019 was a pandemic year and the buildings were closed.
How about the gas, was it, there was a gas issue?
There was a gas issue in 2019.
I'm thinking the water, I'm thinking there was a water that was a large cost to the district in the past and not necessarily the gas. I'm just pulling up to the natural gas line.
No, that's fine, yeah.
Specifically, what was the question there?
So for the 2021, we have 360. About 360 for natural gas, obviously 2020 was 239, but then we closed the buildings. So not, that makes sense.
And we had a wonderful, we had a wonderful winter this year.
Yeah, okay, so.
It wasn't, it wasn't extreme there this year.
Okay.
Weatherwise.
2018 is 339, so I assume we went, we used that number, because 2017 was 291. I'm just looking at discrepancies, not discrepancies.
Absolutely.
Gaps.
And trending, and trending based on actuals that came in when we were developing the budget also.
Okay. And so that'll be, and then what else do I have? So web-based software, which is a page just down. The next page, web-based. So we're going from nine, about 9,000 in 2017 to 14, 545 this year. Again, I get it. We've all, we've changed. We've changed with the pandemic, and that's where I was asking. My question wasn't that it had jumped, because I understand why it jumped. I was wondering if it was CARES money, and I guess it isn't, because it's not in purple.
I bet.
Those were my questions.
There's two established accounts related to the CARES money that were issued by the federal government. That's the CRF account, and that's one grant in and of itself, it's 950, 95K. Excuse me, 950, and then the ESSER component, which is the 795. Okay, and the ESSER component is included here, because we used that last year for our budget. And CRF is not here. But the CRF is funding a lot of our PPE supplies or many, many of the equipments that we're buying, and a lot of the disinfectants that are be used with that equipment as well.
Okay.
And it's not included, it's not included on this budget here.
Okay, that's just, it's not here. Okay, that's it, that's really all I had.
Mrs. Boland has a great COVID prediction. We'll save on gas too, because we're not turning the heat on, so that's all. Keep them cold. I like it. Are there any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez on the reports? Mr. Leary, you still with us?
I am.
Wow, okay, just making sure you didn't doze off. Okay. Well, thank you. I think we can move on in the reports. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, next report would be, the rest are all under the superintendent, so 7.3, 7.4, 7.5, and 7.6, the enrollment reports, the homeless reports, chronic early absenteeism, true and true reduction initiative update, and the superintendent update on partnerships and personnel. So if the superintendent would like to give a little overview on any of those and take any questions, we'll start with Superintendent Jermaine. You're muted, Colleen.
Sorry about that. So the reports in front of you are pretty self-explanatory. Are there any specific questions on any of those reports? Our homeless report, we're just starting to fill out. Enrollment reports are coming in. We still have registrations going on. I have to toggle, so just give me a moment. And let me look at my partnerships. And then there are the personnel actions that we have been filling as we move forward to start our new school year. So I'm open for any questions. Good.
You're muted, Ray.
Oh, well, I'll go with Ms. Winslow, because she had her hands up first.
There you go.
I think that Mr. Young is still on the call, so I was curious to ask him. Because, you know, Ida had originally raised this concern earlier in the year. How is the NACTEC enrollment looking for out-of-district students? Any surprises, or are we where we thought we would be, or anything we should know about or be concerned about?
Yeah, we're down considerably. Not surprised, because they're, they come here for the hands-on piece, and they're not sure if they're going to continue to do that. Also, with the part-time schedule, it's extremely difficult to schedule. For example, Portsmouth, if you are coming part-time to our Career and Tech Center, then you are doing distance learning at Portsmouth High School. So that, you know, turns some people off right there. So I'm not surprised. Carrie and I have been talking about this for a while, but we are, we are down considerably. You know, we didn't do our final push also in the spring, because obviously, you know, we couldn't get anywhere as well. So yes, unfortunately, we are, we are down. Not surprised, but, but our out-of-district numbers are low.
Is that it, Ms. Winslow?
Okay. Yes, I will follow up with Mr. Young. I'm not aware of the numbers yet, so, and I'll bring that back to you. So you're all clear on the numbers. Thank you.
As of today, we're 369, and we're usually around 405.
Thank you.
Not bad, considering the circumstances.
It's not bad.
Yeah, I was going to say, it didn't sound down considerably to me, but.
It's not considerable.
If it's under 400, I'm hitting the streets.
Okay, like, wait.
Okay.
Like you would say 200.
You know.
Would it, it would be considerable if those are out of district, though, because that would affect funding.
Right.
So it depends upon where they fall. So we'll look forward to Colleen Jermaine's update on that.
Sure.
Mrs. Neary?
Just could we add to the enrollment report? Per grade, can we add a subset of who in those grade is in full distance learning, which you sent to us already in an email, but as a, as part of the report? That would be great.
Yes, we're trying to incorporate, incorporate that, if there, if we can embed it into the report you receive, or it will just always be there as an addendum, so you can see it.
Yeah.
Week by week. Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. I think that wraps up the reports of the superintendent. We have suggested meeting dates and agenda items, and we have Tuesday, October 13th is our next regularly scheduled meeting. That's it so far, as far as meetings. I know there's several Zoom in other meetings, but that is the next regularly scheduled meeting. And we have nothing for executive session. So a motion would be in order to adjourn the meeting at this point. Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright, and we'll do a simple voice vote. Ah, Mrs. Neary, go right ahead.
Only because, because of the Medbot? How would we resolve that? If you don't have a meeting until October?
Well, we'll, we'll have the appropriate meeting needed to resolve that. I don't know yet. I mean, that could take, hopefully, we get it resolved by October, but soon as we can get it resolved and get all the questions answered, we will take care of that.
Fantastic.
Great.
We can go home now.
So a motion to adjourn was made by Dr. Flowers, seconded by Ms. Boatright. And we'll do a simple voice vote. All those in favor to adjourn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe it carries seven zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Have a good night.
You too.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, everyone. Okay.